This meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, held on January 15th, 2013 at 6:00 PM at the City Council Chambers Building, 826 North Main Street in Cottonwood. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Olinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
I'm here. Okay, the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have Adrienne Martin, who is with AmeriCorps, the AmeriCorps team. She's going to lead us in the pledge. Do you want to share a little bit of information about yourself first?
Um, sure.
Okay.
My name is Adrienne Martin, and I am with the Yavapai County AmeriCorps Project. We are in charge of the Martin Luther King Day of Service this year in the Camp Verde area, branching out to Cottonwood and Sedona, and trying to get everybody involved. I actually grew up here. I've been here about 15 years. I'm a graduate of American Heritage Academy. I left for college and I came back. Valley pulled me back.
Wonderful. Okay, so if everybody would like to stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought before, um, on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, just two items. One, we will be opening the parking lot behind Orion Bread Company this week, so that is becoming usable. We still have a little bit more work to do on it. And the alleyway that leads from the parking lot out to Pinell will remain closed until we get a traffic control device that we can put in there, just for citizen safety. The second thing is, the Cottonwood Police and Utility Departments have purchased a system to create an emergency notification callback system, and people can opt in to be notified in the case of an emergency, or other, just general community notifications, such as road closures, temporary utility outages, or weather alerts. And you can do that online at the city's website, or at each of the public buildings, there'll be forms to fill out, to where you can be notified either through your home phones, cell phones, your email, and your pagers. I didn't know they still made pagers. Anyway, great new system, and it'll keep our citizens informed, particularly of emergency situations in their particular area. And they can narrow this down to areas, so you're not hearing things that don't necessarily affect your neighborhood. It'll be things that actually affect your neighborhood that you'd be hearing about. So it's a great opportunity. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, yesterday I attended the meeting of the Verde Valley Land Preservation Institute, of which I'm a member, and there was a lot of talk about an event going on at Yavapai College. I think it's February 9th, where all the different entities concerned with water use in the Verde Valley are coming together to try to form a union to work together, I guess. And speaking of Yavapai College, this is the first week of our spring 2013 semester, and it's not too late to register for classes. You can do so through the end of the week.
And that would be www.yc.edu. Pretty simple. Counsel, anybody else? Okay, just wanted to remind everyone that they can watch council meetings, and Inside Cottonwood, all kinds of city, um, city events and things on wwwvertivalleytv.com, or they can watch it on Suddenlink or Cable One TV Channel 2. And if I recall, I think Mr. Bartosz interviewed Kyla Allen, President of the Adopt for Life Center, this past week, so that should be playing. And then I did two episodes interviewing Vince Randolph, who is a, an Apache elder with the Yavapai Apache Nation, and he was very interesting to listen to. We talked about the Rio Verde Reservation, which was, all of the Verde Valley was once part of their reservation. It's really interesting, so if you can get a chance to catch those shows, that would be great. In December, I attended a couple of our Public Safety Board meetings. The City Code has me as Chair of a couple of these boards in code, so I attend those. So we had two of those, and we also had our annual alternate Pension Fire Board meeting. We had the Toys for Tots on December 21st. I think I saw you there, Vice Mayor. Was anybody else there this year? And I just stayed a short while, but it looked like a big crowd, and I would just want to thank the city manager, and the Cottonwood Fire Department. They put together all the bikes, and they're there, and the Cottonwood Rec Center as partners in this event. The council had our retreat on the 7th, and we worked hard on our goals and objectives for the coming year. We were able to cross some off the list that we completed and added some more, so we're very excited about, you know, what we're going to be doing this coming year in serving our citizens. And that, the strategic, the strategic plan will be coming to an official meeting where the public will be able to comment on it, and tell us what they would like to add or subtract. On January 9th, I traveled with Roger Biggs and Sharon Caldwell to the VA Center, and we took more than $20,000 worth of clothing and personal items for the veterans there. The vehicle that we took was full in the back, and it was really, I took a few pictures of them getting things out, along with the employees at the VA. And besides the more than $2,000 of clothing and personal items, the council was here when they were presented a check for $1,700. And this was all donated by members of our community. They, Sharon told me that she had boxes in all the different city departments, and people brought a lot of things in. And this was all due to the annual Fall Classic Disc Golf Tournament, and our local disc golf folks and Dan Luter chose the veterans for their project. And they're thinking, I guess, correct me if I'm incorrect, but you're thinking about doing that every year? Okay, so our veterans really benefited from both our employees and our community. On January 10th, I had lunch with Mayor Adams from Sedona, and we continue to discuss how our communities can work together, and how we can work with the Greater Arizona Mayors Association, and the state legislature, which just had its opening day Monday, yesterday, for the good of our region. On Saturday, the 12th, I attended the Arizona, excuse me, State Parks Strategic Planning, State Parks Foundation Strategic Planning Session. And we just went through the normal, you know, strategic planning efforts, on talking about how the foundation can better help state parks, what they really should be doing for state parks, and, so it was interesting. There were some interesting folks there with some really good ideas. I will be heading down to the Arizona Association of Economic Development to talk with the legislature. I think that Councilmember Norman's going to be going. I'm not sure if Councilmember, if the Vice Mayor is. She has another meeting, another time. And then I have a meeting scheduled with our new representative, Thorpe, Bob Thorpe, I guess is his name, and our other new representative is Brenda Barton, and Senator Chester Crandall, and Casey Rooney, and I, and others, whoever would like to go. Councilmember Norman hopes to meet with all of our legislators, introduce ourselves, because we're new to each other, and try to create that relationship where we can call them, and they'll know who they're talking with, about important issues. And then afterwards, I've been invited to participate in the Quarles and Brady Business Journal, and Arizona Commerce Authority's Second Annual Business Leadership Event. And I got invited through the Flynn Brown Civic Leadership Academy, and what they're doing is trying to put this together, to bring together some of the state's most influential business leaders to network and discuss business leadership, and we will be discussing the ins and outs of succeeding in the business world. So that's going to be a very busy day. If any other council members wish to attend any of these things, just get ahold of the city clerk, and if enough of us go, she can post it in a timely manner. Tomorrow is the Yavapai County Water Advisory Committee meeting, and I don't know if you've been reading the papers and listening to different comments, but the Prescott area communities met, gosh, a week or two ago, a couple weeks ago probably, and all of the people on the Water Advisory Committee received a letter from Mayor Kirkendall asking us to hold a retreat for the WAC, to discuss, you know, whether we want to keep on keeping on. And, you know, my, my thoughts are that the WAC has accomplished so many things, some of the things that we have accomplished, I mean, some leaders will say WAC hasn't accomplished anything, and that's just not correct at all. We've done, you know, recently, we're just now completing the Cyworm Study. It's Central Yavapai Highlands Water Management Study. And we've done a lot of data collection, a lot of USGS studies that have been possibly somewhat controversial at times, but we're looking for facts. And we do a lot of education through the Project WET, which the city council and Dan Luter's department cooperates with and collaborates with, so that's our little education component. But if anybody would like, oh, here's a letter from Mayor Kirkendall. What he says here is, "Move that the city by letter from the mayor to the Yavapai County Water Advisory Committee, request that the WAC hold a plenary session, retreat with its technical advisory committee not later than February 2013, to review its mission structure, governance, operation projects, initiatives, and funding in light of past accomplishments and regional effectiveness, and the recent increase in the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors, two five members, in order to assist participating local governments in assessing continuation under the intergovernmental agreement of September 16th, 2000." So my opinion is, is if you're not at the table talking to each other, you're not ever going to be able to do anything that's going to result in a positive change. And it is difficult to, the relationships on, you know, both sides of the mountain, but I think that we should try to keep talking, and I think the WAC has been very important. So, you know, that'll be kind of what, the place that I come from in the discussion. But everyone's invited to attend. It's tomorrow at 2 o'clock, and it's in Cottonwood, at the County Supervisors Building. Okay, so the next item is proclamation declaring the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday a Day of Service in Cottonwood. Adrienne Martin will be here later to pick up the proclamation, and she is the team leader and outreach coordinator for the Yavapai County AmeriCorps Project.
She's here right now?
And she is here, yes. Okay, so the proclamation. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's teaching can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas, since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas, serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King. Meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas, the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service, and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on this holiday, and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas, King Day of Service projects are being organized by a committee of nonprofits, community organizations, and entities throughout Yavapai County. And whereas, citizens of Cottonwood have an opportunity to participate in events throughout our county on the King Day of Service, which is January 21st, 2013, as well as support ongoing volunteer needs and commit to meaningful service throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Diane Jones of Cottonwood, hereby proclaim the National Martin Luther King Day Junior Holiday as a Day of Service in Cottonwood, and call upon the people of Cottonwood to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Day, and throughout the year. And witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, this 15th day of January 2013. And just want to let the council and community know that the stewards of public lands are working together and planning a cleanup for that day, so Cottonwood will be involved in a service project. So if Adrienne could come up? Diane, on behalf of the City Council, we would like to issue this proclamation to you.
Thank you very much. I would hope to see all of you there. I'd like to know if there's going to be cake and pizza.
Cake and pizza, we're there. You feed them, and they will come.
Thank you so much for the invitation.
All right, the next item is the call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Per ARS 3843102H, comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And we do have one citizen who has asked to speak. That would be Bonnie Reichert?
Reekel.
Okay. If you would please come up and speak to the council and the public.
Thank you. I have a copy of what I'm saying, and I'll give you it, and I'm finished.
Thank you.
Dear Mayor, and to the members of the City Council of Cottonwood, my name is Bonnie Reekel, and I reside at 250, or 2050 West State Route 89A, Cottonwood, Arizona 86326. I live in Pine Shadows, have lived there since 1993. I own a small business called Reekel Consulting, and I am instructor of a modular education program for activity professionals, MEPAP, certified through the National Certification Council of Activity Professionals, NCAP. I work with activity professionals who work in nursing homes, assisted living, retirement centers, adult daycare, hospice, MRDD, senior centers, and other entities that a person might be placed because of illness or accident. Activity professionals need to be qualified to work in these types, some of these types of facilities. I do workshops and/or seminars to help these professionals for their qualifications, certifications, or recertifications. Most of the time, I do these at no cost to the professional, especially at a time of crisis of Medicare and Medicaid. I have stopped doing a lot of the consulting and some of the teaching that I have once did, because I, both myself and my husband are ill. I have lupus and heart disease. Activity professionals are not just the three Bs, Bible, Bingo, and Birthday. They look at the whole person, and try to, to our best of our abilities, give the best quality of life that's possible, even when they are dying. I am here to protest the large increase in business license. It went from $20 to 50. I did not receive this notice until well after the 1st of the year. It is usually sent out in December. When I did receive my statement, which was after the 1st of the year, in fact, it was January 4th, I called the City Hall to find out why. I was told that there hadn't been a raise in a long time. I asked why they were not, we were not notified that there might be a rate increase, and I was told it was on Facebook and a newspaper. And I said, "Not everyone gets a newspaper or has Facebook." I asked why a letter was not mailed to the businesspeople who have a license, and was told, "Oh, my, the cost of postage would be too much." I don't remember if the lady told me there were 1,200 or 1,500 business licenses in the City of Cottonwood. You figure at 45 cents per letter, the cost would have been either $590 or $675 for the licenses. You are making $60,000 for 1,200 businesses, or $75,000 for 1,500 businesses. Your increase was way over 50%, in fact, it was 150%. I would like to know what I'm getting for the extra money. I haven't seen anything that helped me or my small business. It's only going to hurt me as a small business owner. I have not got one thing from the City of Cottonwood for that fee I've been paying since 1993, except for a piece of paper saying I have a license, and it was late, it's only been a sticker to put on a sticker, and it's getting heavy weight. You say the cost to send out a notice would be too costly? Well, you had my email address, and you had my phone number. You could have called me, or emailed me that there might be a rate increase. As a taxpayer in this community, I feel I have a right to protest this increase. I am paying the same for a license as Walmart, this big business in Cottonwood. I mailed my check on January 4th, under protest, so I wouldn't have to pay a late fee. I feel you owe an explanation, and I still haven't received my license, and it was mailed this 4th, and I live four miles from here. If I feel you owe an explanation to the taxpayers of the City of Cottonwood as to what this money is going to be used for, and you certainly owe it to all business owners. I just reread my registration renewal letter, and other than notice, notice of intent to increase business registration fee, where it said Cottonwood City Council would consider imposing the following fee for business registrations with the city effective January 1st. Why couldn't this been sent by mail, or letter, or email to all businesses? If this was passed by the city council, why was a business registration rule not sent out before January 4th? You always got it in December. This should have been sent right after December 18th meeting. Now, I'm sure your response is going to be it was a holidays, but that's no excuse. You have employees, we're the taxpayers, and we're paying them. You should, they should be doing that as part of their job. Thank you for your time, as for your information, I have a bachelor's degree in science and education. I'm a certified activity consultant, certified activity educator, certified activity, assisted living consultant, and also memory care consultant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item number seven, approval of minutes of the regular meetings of November 6th and December 4th, 2012. Are there any comments? And if not, I entertain a motion, Mr. Pratt.
I move, we approve the minutes of the regular meetings of November 6th and December 4th, 2012.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Ms. Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is item number eight, presentation by William Eaton regarding the Old Town Center for the Arts, its operations, programming, future goals, economic impact, value of arts in the community, and potential supplemental funding by the city. Mr. Eaton?
Thank you, Mayor Jones, and Vice Mayor Pfeiffer, councilors, Doug Bartosz, our city manager, Mr. Horton, and citizens who've, are here tonight. It's my honor to be able to talk with you about Old Town Center for the Arts. Albert Einstein once said, "Logic will get you from A to B; imagination will get you everywhere." So with that in mind, I'd like us to use our imagination for a moment, and this first part of the presentation. We're going to imagine that the year is 2004. We're sitting in this very council meeting here, and you are part of a task committee with some citizens that are interested in bringing the Performing Arts Center to Cottonwood, specifically Old Town, Cottonwood. You love the arts, and just like so many cities around the country, thousands of them, cities who have brought a performing arts center to their locale, you want to bring one to Cottonwood. Now, you're not going to expect to pay the millions at Tempe Center for the Arts, or Scottsdale Center for the Arts, or Chandler, but you have some idea of what that might be. So now, if you would, in this meeting, you're thinking about this, and you're daydreaming. And while you're daydreaming, you imagine this new place, and you're sitting out in the audience, and if we could dim the lights, this is what you see as you're daydreaming. If possible. Okay, if Elena could distribute the folders.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So now you wake up from your daydream and it's quite a few years later, 2013. And actually, all the photos that you saw there were photos of performances at Old Town Center for the Arts. Those were taken by Verdi independent photographer, John Pelletier. So I acknowledge his artistic photography work and all the lighting that you saw in your daydream was designed by Christie Eaton, the co-director of Old Town Center for the Arts. And some wonderful art that she provides and brings something special to Old Town Center for the Arts that's not seen at hardly any other venue. And so now we find ourselves, me in front of you, to, to talk about a number of things with Old Town Center for the Arts and to try to find out how art fits into our community and what kind of support we might ask for from a community. So we've just handed out an outline and you have that in front of you, but you don't really need to look at that. This is kind of a visual presentation and as I scroll through here, I think that you'll get most of what I'm talking about here. Back in 1938, this building that is, became Old Town Center for the Arts was built by these gentlemen here and some other people. And I would hardly imagine that they could have thought at the time that was going to, of course, they built this as a Mormon church and it's been home to four other churches since then, a bike shop, a antique store, a music store, the home of Arizona Department of Mower Vehicles in the Cottonwood area, and many other uses. Of course, now we at his Old Town Center for the Arts, a front view. And let's just take a virtual tour around the property. I know many of you have been there. For those that haven't, this is right down on Fifth Street in Main. There we are on Main Street, just a few blocks away. Back in 2004, when we took over this property, we felt more than anything like stewards of this place. It's a beautiful old building, built with solid concrete and stone and really come to appreciate what, what went into this. And the first thing we did was start painting and here's our chief contractor here. Christie, single-handedly painted the whole front building. Phoe painted it, painted the front, which soon became an artistic enterprise with our first tenant there, Masterpieces Gallery. They have since left, but we're excited about our new tenant who just moved in a few weeks ago, Orion's Flower Garden Cafe. Put a little plug for them. Please stop by, they've got some great food there, wonderful atmosphere. And one of the first things we started was to work on the middle part of this building. And this is the picture of going into the rear or the back door of what has become Studio B. You can see it from a distance and we'll zoom in on the sign. Studio B, which was opened in 2005, really the first thing that we opened. And with the grand opening, soon after, classes started in dance. It was Pam Zozinger's class. She was one of the first instructors there to teach. And there's since been many other classes that we'll talk about. Hawaiian dance and modern dance. And of course, one of the first instructors was Christie, our co-director, and Elena, who began, we met her as an instructor teaching yoga and she's become instrumental in all the things that we do at Old Town Center for the Arts. After Studio B was finished, we started working on the building. Cottonwood Baptist Church was there when we first arrived and we honored their lease. And when that came up, then we started working on the main building, first by doing a sustainable analysis with John Neville to determine an adaptive reuse program. And we did an addition. And I would mention that working with city of Cottonwood was an extreme pleasure. George Gaylor and all the folks at the city offices were most helpful in making all this happen. We very appreciate their help. This was the addition here. We used a Dobby block, a thick block to match the thickness of the walls. There you see kind of a view into the interiors. This is actually kind of cleaned up compared to when we first arrived there. Here's my son with a grimace on his face when I told him he was going to help me demo the stage. Old lath walls and you can see the opening there. That was quite a project and actually this is, looks neater than some of the remembrances in there. But here is the before and here's the after. Transformed kind of the place and here's the stage area before and after. So a lot of changes. And as if we do a virtual tour around the facility, here's looking out from the stage. And NINFA was our first artisan exhibit. That's another feature of Old Town Center for the Arts to show local and regional artwork. Joe and Melita Wise are currently on exhibit there. Here's part of the addition, the bathrooms, looking out from, back into the space. Work on the foyer with some wonderful old music sheets that Christie found in an antique store. And finally, the chairs arrived. And last thing to do is to put, get the marquee up. And we are ready to open in 2008. That began our operations really. Myself and my wife Christine is co-directors and Elena Bullard took on a major role doing administration, marketing, ticketing and volunteers and day of show. And I'd like Elena to come up and just say a few words about our volunteers and programming.
Well, basically, Old Town Center for the Arts runs on the energy of volunteers. We have three of, I think three, four of our strongest volunteers back who came tonight just to give us support. We basically get from them about 35 to 40 hours per week. They help us for a variety of administrative functions. They also are dedicated and help us on the day of performance, putting their time in. There's a huge number. We have about 70 at any particular year helping us out. And again, we do run on the energy of volunteers. It provides a great place for them to do the service that you were just talking about earlier in this meeting, the Martin Luther King ideals of giving service to the community. These people are extremely dedicated and do whatever it is that needs to be done. And they are drawn not only from Cottonwood, they are from out throughout Verde Valley. We also had somebody come over from Prescott to help us out. So they, we couldn't do it without them.
Now, if Elena, you stay up for just a moment. What we'd like to do is talk about programming that's happened in the last few years, starting with Studio B.
Studio B was the first to open and unfortunately, my statistics only go back to 2008. We had about, basically about 11 instructors. It's grown to about 13 instructors, offering a variety of classes. We have almost, I think we have 20 right now. That comes to, if you work it out, that comes to 1,040 classes per year or 140 students figuring about, on the average of seven students per class, 147, 140 students per week. That comes to an astounding 7,280 students per year. Now, some of these are students that come week after week, but these are students that are coming to Old Town Center for the Arts. And they will do other things while they're in Cottonwood. They will shop, they'll go out to eat, they'll get a cup of tea, they'll patronize some of the other establishments in town. We have, over the years, we've had an astounding variety of classes. These are not necessarily stodgy classes. We also have things like burlesque belly dance, traditional West African drumming we've had in the past. We have a whole variety of movement classes, of course, yoga and dance, music. And Old Town Center for the Arts, Studio B is the home of a number of faith-based and religious groups, Verde Valley Society of Friends, Dances of Universal Peace, and Unity Center of the Valley.
Yes, and I would like to reiterate, a great partnership since 2009, Unity Center of the Valley, kind of keeps a tradition of what's been happening in the building every Sunday there for decades at this beautiful old building. And they certainly have a wonderful group of people that come in on Sundays and Bruce Kellogg is a great speaker and it acknowledges all different kinds of religions and faiths. So it's kind of in keeping with Old Town Center for the Arts as a community place to gather. What's happened over the last few years with the theater? We've had, from the beginning, tried to feature local and regional artists from the area to support the work that they do. And we have also brought in some of the best Arizona talent that tour, these folks all tour nationally and some internationally, of course. And in fact, Dolan Ellis up there on the right will be coming in just a few weeks for another performance. We have, through our relations with Canyon Records, many of their artists and some other Native American artists that are premier in the field, including R. Carlos Nochai and Arvel Byrd, who will be here on, with us in February 2nd. We have national touring artists, groups like The Graskels in the upper left-hand corner that would, would demand a $25,000 fee and came and did a little performance for our community. It sold out in two days. They're a backing band for Dolly Parton. Many other wonderful touring artists, Rosie Flores and Ronnie Cox and Ruby James, Frank Vignola. These are all people that have been all over the world, performing and coming to our community of Old Town, Cottonwood. Also, we've had even bigger stars, gold, platinum, recording artists, Grammy winners. It's John McEwen of Nitty Gritty Dirt Band, Sean Phillips, over nine million albums sold. Lori Lewis, CMA, Country Music Female Voice of the Year Award Grammy winner. Melanie, of course, with some of her number one hits from the 60s and 70s. Maria Moldar, who a lot of people know, and Gary Morris, Wings Beneath My Wings, Jimmy Fortune of the Statler Brothers, and artists from all over the world. We've had artists come to Cottonwood from every continent except Antarctica. Groups from Mongolia and Central Asia, from Africa, South America, Australia, France, England. So it's been a wonderful experience to see all the different artists from around the world and a lot of theater events, comedy, dance and magic. I know Karen and Linda were at our center just this last weekend with Brad Zinn. I hope Karen, you weren't too embarrassed by being in the front row.
No, it was wonderful.
Brad decided to come and sit on Karen's lap.
[laughing]
And I just have to tell you, we didn't, we didn't set that up. You just happened to be sitting in the middle and he, he made no use of it. You'd have to be there like that. I think he was Groucho Marx at the time.
Yeah.
So maybe Groucho gets a little bit of a break there. And so a lot of theater events. So as you can see, kind of a diversity of programming and we've also done some festivals. The Water to Wine Festival, featuring all the local wineries and grape growers in the valley as a, as a partnership with the Wine Consortium. We're having another, our third annual Old Town Blues Fest, which is becoming an annual event, bringing some of the best blues players from all over the country. The Spring Planting Festival, which we are founders of, it's spread all over the Verde Valley and Sedona and we'll do that again this year. So that's just a quick rundown of some of the things that have happened in the last few years. And what we're really here to talk about is our future, some of our goals, what the value of art is, what, what we feel our contribution is and can be, and a request for your support. We will certainly continue to do what we're doing with our programming. We'd like to do more diverse things, possibly some more partnerships with educational opportunities with the Abapi College and other institutions. We also want to expand our volunteers. We have a great base for that. We're thinking of creating a board and possible committees to, to work on things other than just day of show opportunities that they could be very helpful with. We want to increase our ticket sales through better marketing and having volunteers help with that. We already have a lot of partnerships with business sponsors. We haven't written a grant to this point, but this could be our first year to do that. And our donations are available through our partnership with Cornucopia Community Advocates. And this has been very helpful to us in, in starting to work towards meeting our operational costs. And as you see, a list of business donors. We look at that as an opportunity for a co-promotion and marketing as well as the philanthropic opportunities they might have to support the arts in our community. And you see the bottom section there, city support, supplemental funding and, and this is kind of a two-part session in, in talking with you about that. So bring some questions. And questions are, what is the value of art in the community? What does art bring to us? Why should anyone, private or public sector, invest in the arts? This is one of my favorite quotes at our grand opening. Diane Jones was there to help kick things off back in 2008. She had a wonderful address to all those in attendance. We had a full house and this was one of the couple of sentences from her talks that I wanted to read here. "The Old Town Center for the Arts reminds us that our community is a special place, distinct from anywhere else. The arts are a connection between people. Yes, the Old Town Center for the Arts gives us a sense of place and a sense of community." I don't think we could have written a better mission statement. Thank you, Diane. Art is essential. This is one of the first things that we talk about. Each one of us are exposed to art in our life in some way and each one of these quotes brings some ideas of that. "The arts are not a frill. They're response to our individuality, our nature, helping to shape our identity." Art is fundamental. There's a quote from Albert Einstein, "Imagination will take you everywhere." And the last quote, I think, is kind of interesting. "The arts are the best insurance policy a city can take on itself." But I think important to this discussion is beyond the cultural enrichment that comes with the arts, what does that investment mean? And Robert Lynch of the Americans for the Arts has this quote, "The key lesson is that communities that invest in the arts reap the additional benefits of jobs, economic growth, and equality of life that positions those communities to compete in our 21st century creative economy." And so we started to look at statistics and there's a wealth of information out there to try to find out, well, what does the arts bring to a community? How does that investment pay off? Just what does that do? The study that came the closest was right in Flagstaff. And when you think of the community of 70,000 up there, it's not too unlike what we have here in Verde Valley. Not quite as many as 70,000 people, but the surrounding towns that make up our Verde Valley have some similarities. And this was not just close to us, but turns out the most comprehensive study ever conducted in all 50 states. So we put some importance in, in the- So we put some importance in the data that gathered. What they found was that people that attend an event spend money. They don't come and just see an event. They come into a place like Old Town Center for the Arts, go out to dinner, buy souvenirs and gifts, other retail items, they stay overnight, they spend money on transportation to get there. And if they come from some other place outside of town, which many of our guests do, they spend more. $55 on average. Some spend more, some less. So what does that mean for Flagstaff? Close to $73 million. That's a lot. Lot of local jobs created from all the arts that they do in Flagstaff. This especially, I know Doug will take note of this, 3.8 million for city and county tax revenue to help the cities maintain the things that they need to do for their budget. How a dollar is respending in the community? The analysis here figures that, when you look at these statistics, what respending means is that if Old Town Center for the Arts goes down and buys a bucket of paint from one of the local stores, or buys some item that we use, or pay for anything, that money gets respended in the community. Sales taxes are paid on that. The businesses that we help support pay their property taxes and sales taxes. So it's a cumulative effect, and that's where you get this added value with not only the expenditure input, but also the jobs and so forth. So, how do we measure our individual impact? In the last, since 2008, we've had a little over 20,000 attendees. Roughly about 16,000 of those are what we call local residents. That's Cottonwood, Cornville, Clarkdale, Jerome. We count Sedona and Camp Verde, even though they're close by as non-local visitors, and we get a lot of those. And we get a lot from the Phoenix area, as Elena said, and even as far as Tucson, Flagstaff, and of course, our visitors that come from out of the States, out of the country. Our direct expenditures, a little over half million, sense and, pretty small budget, really, when you saw that list of entertainers, pretty efficient operations. Studio B, 32,760 class hours. That's a lot of visits to Old Town, and that is an impact. Unity Center, 14,500, and they're just getting started. They pretty much have a full house every Sunday, and that brings a lot of people into the city of Old Town Cottonwood and greater Cottonwood. The study, what was wonderful about this, they provided, provide to groups like us a calculator. We plug in some numbers. You can see there, we're in a population area less than 50,000. We plug in our total expenses, our total attendance, and push a button, and it shows an impact. And again, their study includes thousands of hours, so it's probably pretty close. So we did that calculator for theater attendees, did an add-on for adding on Studio B attendees, and we also did one that includes all three of our impact areas, the theater, Studio B, and Unity Center. When you total all those, you can see the yellow lines represent each gradient there with the theaters, theater and Studio B, and all three. If you look at the overall impact, over 2 million. It seems, is that a big figure, small figure? There's an impact. Close to $100,000 for local government. That's money that's generated, again, in sales tax and things that come directly to Cottonwood as a result of just Old Town Center's participation here. Fairly significant. State government also reaps rewards from investment in the arts. So, beyond that measurement, there's other things that we haven't yet tried to put a quantified value on. What might be the value of tourism? OTC as a destination. Obviously, people come, as I mentioned, from other places. They come in, much of that's factored into those figures you saw. But how about Old Town as a destination? We would lobby for the idea that since 2005, we've been branding Old Town. And why I say that is because our press releases go to 50 media groups all over the state promoting Old Town. And I think that may have been why Dan Engler has said, you know, that we've made an impact in Old Town. Many of those people that read about events that are happening at Old Town Center for the Arts, they may not come to that special event, but guarantee, if they see that over and over again, Old Town starts to register in their minds. And every time they see that, and the same thing, as you've noticed with the wine industry. Of course, I'm going to make the case for the arts today, but the wine industry has obviously done some wonderful things for our community and economic development. Volunteerism also has an economic value that we haven't tried to put a number to, although there is a calculator for that, and in the next step, we will provide more information about that. And certainly, as Elena said, the quality of life for the volunteers. Instructor jobs at Studio B, performance fees for our local performers, and just the community asset that Old Town Center for the Arts represents. Bottom line, I return to Diane's quote, "Sense of place, value priceless." So where are we now? The first years we started, up to 2011, our ticket sales and rentals represent about 75% of our operating budget. 25% of that is subsidized by our staff, just a very few people, as you know. Last year was a banner year for us. We started working towards getting more donations, actually through our partnership with Cornucopia. At a recent meeting with Doug Bartosz, with the Umbrella Group that he's formed, we're very much looking forward to partnering directly with the city on additional donation opportunities. And these really can be significant. 8% donations just from last year represents, starts to represent, helping us meet our needs. If you look to the far right there, this is the telling story right here. Most performing arts centers operate on 35% as an average. Many of them operate on less. Some that I came across, ticket sales represent 10% or less. Some of them only use ticket sales to cover the cost of bringing in their acts, the shows that they brought in. All the rest was paid for by the universities or by a city government, depending on what kind of initial setup there was. So you can see what the discrepancy is for us. So what this, really this talk about is today, is you've had it, thank you very much for your patience to listen to all of this, but the gist of this is that where do we need to get to is increased donations and hopefully get some city funding and explore other opportunities. What I'd like to leave this session with is that, I won't say anything specific, in the same way that we had that talk about dreaming, I count on all of you to be creative with ideas. And Diane and I have talked a little bit about us coming back, not necessary for, not a full-length presentation, but to introduce a proposal of what we would like to ask the city to help fund. And we've had discussions about some other possible collaborations with partnering with other events that the city puts on. Some cities, by the way, like the city of Tempe, city of Chandler, Mesa, they actually enacted a small sales tax. And people resist taxes, but these are actually pennies on the dollar. Some of them are quarter of 1%. A lot of those kind of percentages, people don't balk too much at. So that's even something to consider. But we're not talking about millions of dollars. When we operate on about a $60,000 a year operating budget that is extremely efficient, I will say, though, it doesn't include salaries for the main people involved. So our question is, how much longer will we contribute as a philanthropic organization? It may be years to come. We're kind of taking it year to year, and our exploration is to see, does this fit a community's needs? And do we go back to square one? Would you, as members or future council members, say, yes, let's bring a performing arts center to Old Town? What will that cost us? Well, to give you a clue, it'll cost millions. Maybe not 5 million, maybe you can do it 2 million, 3 million. And I'm sure Doug would have a handle on this. So what we propose is, we'd like to think that we bring something to Old Town, some culture and art at an extremely good price tag. And we look forward to coming back with that proposal, and we thank you for your attention, and hopefully we can count on you for some support for our future.
Thank you very much. And William, I probably should have done a little introduction or allowed you to introduce yourself a little bit, but I think that we're just very lucky to have a person or a family such as Christine and William Eaton, who have just poured their hearts into this center. And as he said, normally, it would be, you know, a group of citizens getting together saying, we would like, you know, to increase the arts. And we do have a lot of artists and a lot of different community members who do talk about the arts. But William, if you want to share a little bit about your guitar school and your background, if you would, please, so that the public kind of knows why you're so good at what you do, and why you have the ability to bring in the kinds of acts that you bring into town.
Well, thanks, Diane. The first thing I want to say, though, is, you know, this dreaming session is kind of a dream for us, too. Because I want to say that this is a serendipitous thing that happened. And why I say we're stewards of that building is because we didn't plan from day one, we're going to create an arts center. It was Christie's dream, and let me say a few words about her. Christie toured with Nikolai Dance Theater, danced all over the world. And I use that phrase about having performers from every continent except Antarctica. Christie has danced on every continent except Antarctica. And Nikolai Dance Theater is, in my mind, one of the best all-time modern dance companies. So she brings a wealth of experience with production value, the lighting that you saw in that first sequence that John Pelletary took. That, she won't claim to be a lighting designer, but we've had some of the best, and Maria Moldar wanted to take her on tour with her. Paul Thorne, one of the leading bands, he kept looking back to watch the photos.
That's awesome.
And people come up afterwards and said, oh, did the band bring those? Christie spends hours to create this wonderful atmosphere, and very subtly, and those of you who have been at performances know what I'm talking about. It adds such a dimension. My background, back when I was in grad school, going to business school, I applied for a job as a programmer. This was at Stanford, Graduate School of Business. And myself and Danny Schur were hired on to program for Stanford. Now, it was through the student body. But we programmed for Frost Amphitheater, 10,000 Seater, Dinkle Spiel, five different venues on campus, Mason Amphitheater. We had, we got lucky, we booked some number one acts all throughout. We made a lot of money for Stanford. I feel like calling them up sometime and say, hey, now I've got an arts center, can you send me some money? And we were lucky with our programming. So I have some experience with that. It kind of, I have to say, when you have large venues like that, you can create a lot of revenue. I came out over quote after quote, one directly about Tempe Center for the Arts, saying, you know, these places are not revenue generators. And what they mean by that is, you know, like our size of our theater, 140-seater, a lot of the events, we'd have to sell ticket prices for $50 to really meet a real budgeting situation. But we want to keep tickets, you know, we'd like to even make them lower, we try to price those. My background in making guitars, I actually left school, started a guitar-making school with two other gentlemen, and I've been actually doing that since 1975. So I build guitars, and I'll go down to school tomorrow. We've got Frank Ford, one of the leading techs in the world, that will be teaching my students. We've got 30 students in session now. We've graduated over 2,000 students since '75, and they work in every company you can imagine, and in a lot of different guitar-making situations. So that's been real satisfying to see people in charge of management musicians in Fender, Gibson, every company you can name. During that process, I build my own guitars. So I do a little bit of performing and touring and recording myself with Canyon Records. And so, that gives me a little bit of insight to what a performer is. It's interesting to be on the other side, too.
Right, and you've donated time also to our walking on main events.
Yes, played for some of those events, and it's a wonderful community we have here.
We sure do.
And I will say to all of you, if the price for a business license went up to 500, I'd gladly pay it like that, just so you know. City of Cottonwood, I speak to this because we built a new school in Phoenix and worked with the Phoenix Community Development Office and zoning, you know, and I, so many times, I wish George would have been in charge down there. Because, you know, what a small community brings, and I'll bet Doug has a reference to this as well, working with Scottsdale. When we found this little oasis here in Old Town, we thought, this is a beautiful place to be. It's in some way still an undiscovered place. And I'm trying to make the case for arts beyond Old Town Center for the Arts. I'm advocating it's not just us that would require support. And I think all of you are in that position now where, you know, it's not just philanthropy. You can see the figures. Bringing people to Old Town, tourism is a major force in making our economy spin and hum along. So those opportunities, I think, are investments and not just, you know, should we give some money away? I think it all comes back. So I think that's important to note.
Council, do you have any questions, or Mr. Pratt?
Just a couple of comments. I think Dan Engler's comment that it's the crown jewel of Old Town really is valid. When I did run for city council, one of the things I said I was interested in was promoting the arts, so I've always been a big supporter, and I've been to a few shows, not as many. And you really have brought just great cultural events to our community. I really appreciate that, and it's had an economic effect. And it has helped make Cottonwood a destination like the wine industry, and it just gives people something else to do. They're going to go from your place to the wine tasting rooms. And I should say, I'm a little biased because I've been to a few shows, enjoyed them, and I did participate and read a few poems in one of your poetry reading shows one night. Just had a great time, both as an audience member and as a participant. So I really appreciate what you're doing and support you wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Mr. Ilinski?
I just have a question, if you don't mind my asking. Are you a 501(c)(3), or is that Cornucopia?
Cornucopia's 501(c)(3).
Okay. That's how you're able to accept tax?
Yes.
Deductible donations?
And we've thought about transitioning. To be honest, part of it is time. Running a school in Phoenix is a full-time job. Trying to run Old Town Center is another full-time job. And as I said, we've done this because it's been a passion, we've enjoyed it, and most of these centers start out as nonprofit, just from day one. Fortunately, with Cornucopia, that gives us all the latitude that we need for fundraising. And, you know, with further talks with Doug, we'd like to even stay closer to home on some of these events and have those kind of partnerships as well for fundraising. You know, ideally, you know, over time, we don't live forever, what, you know, could this transition? And here's something to keep in mind. Some people would come forward and say, well, it's quaint, it's an old building, we need a more modern facility. And point well taken. A lot of universities and cities struggle with this, and the last 10 years has seen a growth of some of the most amazing architectural buildings in the country that are, take a look at Tempe Center for the Arts, for example, in our locale. But a lot of, as I was researching, you see this amazing stuff. It's a great outlet for architects, for artists. And Cottonwood could grow to that, too. But why not grow it from a space like this? It makes it, if we transition where we start to get committees involved, more people involved that help with programming, that help with administration and running an operation like this, it can only grow. And then if it needs to get to a point where you say, you know, this is a neat little old building in Old Town, let's build a performing arts center. Then we have a track record.
Then we have a track record. And that track record helps not only the people that might be involved to, you know, even we talk about classes that could teach people production values, administration and management tools to run a facility like this. There's all kinds of those opportunities that then, you know, citizens don't have to come and start from scratch. Starting from scratch would be a difficult thing with a community this size. We didn't find a lot of comparables for a town of, you know, the size of Cottonwood. We're talking about 10,000, so it's quite a different thing.
I could tell by the presentation that you gave that you are a business graduate of Stanford. It was very well done. Vice Mayor?
This is one opportunity, though, for our young people to go see something that's not on a flat screen with buttons on it, where they can actually get involved. I think it's great. Thank you. And we had a blast the other night. That was a lot of fun.
I know, it is. It's the crown jewel and there are some community members that still have to learn about it, you know, as much as you've advertised and...
It's a good point, and I forgot to make that point. If we polled, you know, if we had a show, well, a show of hands, how many of you have been to Old Town Center for the Arts?
Quite a few.
More than most. This is a bigger, in most groups like this, it'd be less than 10%. It might be, out of 100, it might be three or four or five. And how many have even heard about Old Town Center for the Arts? You'd be surprised as much, you know. And one thing I need to mention, one of our most important allies is our local paper, Verdi Independent, Kudos. Kudos is by far and above one of the best arts and entertainment publications anywhere in the country. I know this from my experience in touring around the country. Last year, we were fortunate enough to tour in Russia and Spain. And you go to some of these large areas, metropolitan areas, you're lucky to get a mention in there as an artist and even smaller communities. The model that Pam and Dan have created with Kudos is they showcase all the arts and allow those groups to be their writers, basically. That's what happens and you send in press releases, they get published, the layouts are great, it's just, you know, it doesn't get any better than that.
The covers are excellent.
And that's about the only way we can exist. Obviously, we have advertising dollars invested with Kudos, but that helps with exposure. Nevertheless, even with front cover public, that doesn't ensure a sellout. And it's just the numbers. What we hope over time is, the more people find out about it, then, you know, if people came once a year, but if all 50,000 people in this area came once a year, that number goes up. Our average attendance is about 80. We're off to a good start this year. Karen and Linda were a sellout show. The last five shows were all sellouts except one.
That's great.
But, you know, when we start doing that, we think, oh, now we're on a roll, and you never know. But we have a great show on Friday, come to that. Who's to guide along?
I want to come into Dolan Ellis again and bring my husband, so I'll see if I can...
You're invited. And by the way, if the rest of you, if you didn't get my email, you're all invited as guests, come to see a show. So we'd love to have you come and just see something that you might want to participate in.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have a couple of citizens who wanted to comment also. We have Susan Carroll who wanted to comment on this item.
Yes, thank you very much. I moved here about four years ago from Florida. And when I came here about six years ago on vacation, I fell in love with Cottonwood and knew it was my home. So I want to say to you that it's an honor and privilege to live here, first of all. When I first moved here about four years ago, one of the first places I went was Old Town Center for the Arts. And I was amazed at the beauty and the intimacy where art and creativity thrived. And through that first year, I volunteered extensively and came to respect and admire and to love Christie, William, and Alina and the selfless dedication they gave to Old Town Center for the Arts. And I just would like to also mention, I know we talk about expansion, but right now, that intimate environment not only enriches the crowd, the people that are in the audience, but also the performer. I've watched them and how they interact and it's just beautiful. So love to see expansion, but right now it's really awesome. So with all of that, I know William did, I was going to summarize, but he went into detail everything about the budget and the revenue and successful businesses bring in revenue and how helping that expand will help Old Town Cottonwood and bring people in and bring that sense of community. So I won't go into that very much, but I also would like to encourage you to please seriously consider offering financial support for Old Town Center for the Arts. Not only the financial, but we went into also the marketing. I know they do a great job, but it's so disappointing for me to be out in Cottonwood or Sedona and people have never heard of it. I'm like, how could you not hear of Old Town Center for the Arts? It's just a beautiful, beautiful place. So I just would ask that you seriously consider this. And just, I want to just also go to the other side, the beauty. I've been there in the audience, I've volunteered extensively. When people walk in that door, they feel this incredible sense of community. And that's not only for our locals, but for people all over the world, because I've talked to them. They feel that sense of community, hope, beauty, art, and creativity, a lot of things that are missing in our world today. And the bottom line for this, I would like to say, is when they walk into Old Town Center for the Arts, they see magic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would agree. Okay, we have Lori Verdean, Verdean, if you excuse me for trying to pronounce names.
Verdeer.
Verdeer, okay, thank you.
My poor writing.
All right.
I've lived in Cornville since 1988 and being here in the Verde Valley all that time, seen a lot of growth. And I volunteered for several years with the Old Town Center for the Arts in the community. I'm a licensed professional counselor. So I just wanted to say, a healthy state of being is created by balance. Community culture is enriched and enhanced by the arts. Old Town Center for the Arts promotes health and contributes to positive growth of the Cottonwood community and the entire Verde Valley.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions from the council? If not, thank you very much, all of you, for the background that you gave us, the history and a little bit about the future, and we'll talk to you soon. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, the next item is, comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Old Business is ordinance number 593 amending Article III Procedures of the Cottonwood Zoning Ordinance by adding a new section 309 Hillside Development Standards. Can we, I think maybe we should just come back to this and go ahead and get Yavapai College. Can we do that, skip around that far? Because we do have, I was so happy that the dean of Yavapai College, James Perry, got to see this presentation tonight about the Old Town Center for the Arts, because there could be some real connections, I think, with the college also. And, yeah, so it was good that you could learn all about the facility. But if, we'll just skip both Old Business and Consent and get right on to New Business, item number three, an agreement with Yavapai Community College to provide reclaimed water for the college to irrigate its vineyard. And the dean has to drive back to Chino Valley tonight, so he's already going to be a little bit late home. And he has a new two-week-old baby girl, so we don't blame him for wanting to get home tonight. She'll probably be sleeping.
The attorney has suggested that I should recuse myself because I work for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pratt.
Madam Mayor, if I could just start off with kind of the background on this issue?
Yes, so if we'll have our city manager describe this item.
This has probably been going on for at least three years now. And the college and the city have been in discussions about trying to provide reclaimed water to the college primarily for the irrigation of their new vineyards up there. And we have, it's taken us a time to do it because it was a, could be an expensive project, but I think we found a way to successfully make it happen. And this has been a project where there has been fantastic cooperation between the college and the city, both recognizing that this is a very sustainable way to provide water to their vineyards and not only today, but certainly as the vineyard program grows up there. So like I said, this has been a long time in coming, so it's gratifying both for me and I know for James as well to actually see this agreement come to the council at this point. So with that, Dan can give you the details as to what the agreement has and answer any of the council's questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Doug, Madam Mayor and Council. Doug's done a great job of explaining the process we've gone through, so I'll just hit a few of the highlights for the council that the agreement contains. The agreement we're presenting tonight would have city staff designing the line and managing the construction of the line. There is a clause in the contract that should Yavapai College, after the design is complete, decide not to construct the line, that the city would be reimbursed for any reasonable cost in the design. And once again, I want to highlight, this will be done internally with city staff, we will be bringing consultants in. Once the design is approved and the college has signed off on it, the city will solicit quotes from our underground job order contractors for construction of the line. The college will take the lead on obtaining any easements. There are a couple of small easements that are needed for this. Yavapai College will deposit funds with the city to construct it, and then the city will pay their job order contractors for construction of this. Once the line is constructed, inspected, and everyone's in agreement, the city will turn over all rights to this line off of the wastewater plant property to the college. College will also assume maintenance responsibilities for the reclaimed line downstream of the meter, which will be on the wastewater plant properties. So should there be a problem with the line in the future, it'll be the college's responsibility to fix. Should the college determine they want some additional treatment over and above what ADEQ requires us to treat the reclaimed to, the college will be responsible for that treatment. The city will provide technical expertise on that. And one of the important conditions of the contract is, it would be for 10 years and at the college's request, the way the contract's written, the current rate of 92 cents per thousand gallons of reclaimed would be maintained for the college under this contract. Be happy to answer any questions council would have.
Questions, council?
Just a comment, I looked the contract over, I'm just excited to see that we'll have an excellent use for the reclaimed water. I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
We do have the dean here. Is there anything that you would like to share tonight with members of the public or the council?
Mayor Jones, council members. Thanks for the opportunity just to briefly talk to you about this particular project and as we look back and a lot of the other presenters tonight is everything about a culture, a community, and partnerships and collaboration. If you're not familiar with some of the things that are happening in higher education right now, it's very difficult to build and launch programs without partnerships, especially communities. And one of the main focuses really of executive leadership and the college is economic development. And this really plays into that piece. As you look at leveraging resources, technologies, expertise, this is kind of a win-win for everyone. As Doug had said, this is about a three-year run in trying to come up with the best option for both the community and the students. And really, I have to applaud the city of Cottonwood for thinking farther down the road in infrastructure for reclaimed water, you know, so you already provided a service for the constituents within this city. But then you do it again by providing a service to Yavapai College, another governmental agency, and then we, by launching this program, and the only way we would be able to build out these vineyards is to do it on reclaimed water. Really, it wouldn't be cost-effective for us to do, but then we provide that service again through you to launch these programs and train a workforce to drive economic development within the Verde Valley. So you ought to applaud yourselves if you haven't already. With that, I just ask that you consider adoption of this agreement. And I would just like to say that Yavapai College is really thankful for all the work that the city of Cottonwood has done for us. And we look into the future for further partnerships and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And really, this is all about collaborating. It's a regional effort. Everything that the college does, the Verde Valley campus is for all of the residents of Yavapai County. And on the other hand, with the city, you know, the different steps we've taken in conservation have allowed us to pump one-third less out of the aquifer than we did when the companies were privately owned. So all of the steps we've taken, and I think this is just another step that the city is taking that works for the region and makes us able to participate as a region in the Southwest Wine Center, which will serve the region. So it's all about regionalism and we appreciate the ability to share a partnership with you to provide the water at a fair price, I think, that hopefully you'll be able to afford. So it's all about, you know, reclaimed water is one of the sources of the future. And I think Cottonwood is showing, both with the reclamation plant that we're building and with actions such as collaborating with the college on the Southwest Wine Center and getting those grapevines watered, that we are all working together for the region. So I just want to thank the college and Dr. Wills and everybody that's been involved in this process and thank our own staff. Mr. Bartas?
Yeah, and just one other thing I'd like to share with the citizens, because I know the council's aware of this, but the city currently does treat all the wastewater that is kind of developed at the college. So this is an opportunity for us to give some of that wastewater back, just a little cleaner, so.
That's a great point. So we provide the wastewater services for the college and we'll clean that water up and send it back to them to reuse. So that sounds like a pretty good plan.
Sustainable program.
It's very sustainable. Okay, so any other comments from the council members? Any comments from members of the public on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the agreement with Yavapai County Community College District to provide reclaimed water for irrigation.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor that made the motion, council member Ilinski seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations on the new baby.
Drive home safely. All right. Okay, we'll move back to Old Business. Ordinance number 593 amending Article III Procedures of the Cottonwood Zoning Ordinance by adding a new section 309 Hillside Development Standards, second and final reading. We have Charlie Scully with us tonight to make the presentation to the council and the public.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. This is the second reading of amendment to the zoning ordinance, adding a new section for hillside development standards. It was heard at the, the first reading was on December 18th last month. This item has also been considered by the council at a number of other meetings and discussed at length in 2010, 2009, 2008. It seems to have started at a joint session with the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2007. So the idea's been through a number of different drafts. Planning and Zoning Commission has considered this item at their meetings on numerous occasions and various issues and drafts and recommended approval. We had sent out copies of the draft to various engineers, land surveyors, large landowners and developers, so they had a chance to review this. And so if approved tonight, it will take effect in 30 days.
Okay, as you said, this is something we've kind of been hashing over since I became mayor, which was five years ago. So it's, you guys have spent a lot of time, the city manager and his staff, on researching and writing and trying to do the best thing for our future development and something that benefits the people who own private property and something that benefits the community and something that benefits our future view sheds. So it's, a lot of great work has gone into this. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
And are there any comments by the public? If not, Mr. Pratt had his hand up.
Yeah, I move to approve ordinance 593.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. Councilmember Dowling seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please read ordinance number 593 by title... City Clerk, please read ordinance number 593 by title only.
Ordinance number 593, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending Article III Procedures of the Cottonwood Zoning Ordinance by adding a new section 309 hillside development standards. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Item number 10, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is a special event liquor license application submitted by Ruth Marie Wickes, applicant for the Verde Valley Concert Association, for an event scheduled for February 20th, 2013, at Country Bank located at 597 East State Route 89A. The second item on the consent agenda is a special event liquor license application submitted by Kyla Allen, applicant for the Adopt for Life Center for Animals, for a fundraiser dinner scheduled for February 16th, 2013. Everybody got that? February 16th, 2013, at the Cottonwood Recreation Center located at 150 South Sixth Street. Are there any items that the council would like to pull off the consent agenda for discussion? Are there any items that members of the public would want to pull off for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so council member Norman made the motion, council member Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 11, new business. The following items again are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is appointing Lynn Riordan as a civil traffic hearing officer for the Cottonwood Municipal Court, and we have Judge Lasota with us this evening to discuss this item.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Pfeiffer, members of the council. My pleasure to introduce to you Lynn Riordan, who's a member of our staff. She's a clerk one. She previously worked some time ago for three years for the city of Cottonwood Municipal Court as well, before going on to spend nine years as a judicial assistant for Yavapai County Superior Court. So she brings a great deal of experience to us. The last few years, she's been an administrative assistant with the Public Defender's Office, and she's caught on very quickly since she's been here. Communication form sets forth pretty much all the rationales of why I'm requesting that she be appointed, as well as Ms. Vergara, who will be up in just a minute. Both have attended and passed required judicial training. Once you approve these ladies as civil traffic hearing officers, every person who walks in the court will immediately meet with a judicial officer. They won't have to go through two layers of people to try to get resolutions to their issues on civil cases. They'll be able to get it done with the first person that they see. Obviously, that brings productivity and customer assistance issues and increases for our court. This is believed to be a first for our size of larger courts, where everyone in the court is now a judicial officer. It's kind of the wave of the future, a lot of courts where they're trying to get as many people as possible that are qualified to serve as civil traffic hearing officers. And I think Ms. Riordan is an excellent addition to our judicial staff as well.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Okay.
We would ask for a three-year term, that as Mr. Horton pointed out, you can recommend anywhere from one to three, you can appoint for anywhere from one to three years for civil traffic hearing officers. There's two for judges or associate magistrates.
Okay.
But we would request three.
Okay, that makes sense. Any questions or any comments from the members of the public? If not, I would entertain a motion, Mr. Ilinski.
I'll move to appoint Ms. Riordan as a civil traffic hearing officer for a term of three years.
Second. Okay, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is appointing Ricky Vergara as a civil traffic hearing officer for the Cottonwood Municipal Court.
Thank you.
Judge Lasota.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, members of the council. Ms. Vergara has been with us for almost three years now. She's been with two previous courts, so she brings a great deal of experience to our court, as well as the maturity and customer service that she exhibits on a daily basis. So we would request that you appoint her as a civil traffic hearing officer for a three-year term as well. Thank you.
Any questions on the information that was provided in the packet, which is available to the public on the internet, www.cottonwoodaz.gov? Okay, any comments from the public? Mr. Pratt?
I move to appoint Ms. Ricky Vergara as civil traffic hearing officer for a term of three years.
Second. Okay, so Mr. Pratt made the motion, council member Norman seconded it first. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service to our citizens. Okay, item number four is a special event liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, for a business mixer scheduled for February 21st, 2013, at the Old Town Center for the Arts located at 633 North Fifth Okay, so we have a couple of council members declaring conflicts because they serve on the board or work for the chamber. So any discussions or questions by the council? I think it was pretty self-explanatory in the packet.
Yep.
Any comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion, council member Norman.
I move to recommend approval of the special events liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, for the business mixer scheduled for February 21st, 2013, at the Old Town Center for the Arts.
Second.
Okay, council member Norman made the motion, council member Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll throw a plug in for the Old Town Center for the Arts, and just invite everyone to the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce mixer on February 21st. And I think those start at 6:00 PM. Am I correct, Vice Mayor? Mixers start at 6:00?
Yes.
Okay, at 6:00 PM. All right, renewal of the biosolids hauling and disposal contract for the wastewater treatment plant with DNK Farming Enterprises LLC, and we have Mr. Luter with us to explain the project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know biosolids disposal is always a fascinating topic for the council. Last November of 2011, through a competitive bidding process, the contract was awarded to DNK to dispose of our biosolids. The contract does allow, with justification, to ask for a 3% price increase at the renewal. Staff has reviewed the letter sent by DNK and feel the price increase is justified. And just for some extra information, the second quote we got in the original bid from Waste Management was 57.46 per ton, so even with the 3% price increase, DNK is still hauling it for less than Waste Management had originally proposed in the bid. And staff would recommend that council approve the first annual renewal with a 3% cost increase.
Any questions? This was long.
Clear as mud.
There's a lot of information in the packet. It's like this packet is 260 pages, thank you, Dan. Okay, so any comments from the public on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the first annual renewal of the biosolids hauling and disposal contract with a 3% increase in compensation.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, council member Dowling seconded it. Are you two taking turns here?
Ah, competition.
Collaboration, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six is award of bid for removal and replacement of the rotating beacon and windsock at the Cottonwood Airport. Mr. Scott?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you may remember that the city received a grant from the Arizona Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division. The grant was for approximately $20,000, and it was to replace the rotating beacon and windsock at our airport. As you may know, our airport beacon is one of the oldest structures in Cottonwood, it's well over 100 years old, and in need of some maintenance. This grant, by the way, and this project will not replace the tower itself, it will just replace the rotating beacon itself, and it's going to replace it in kind with a newly refurbished beacon, so it's actually same style as the existing beacon, but just refurbished. This grant is also, or the project is also meant to replace our existing windsock, and our existing windsock is an 18-inch diameter windsock that's six feet long. Our new windsock will be a 36-inch diameter windsock that will be nine feet long, which many of the pilots have requested. They say when they fly in, they look more at the flags than they do at the windsock because they can't see it. This will be a major upgrade that a lot of pilots ask us about. The city has gone out to bid for the project, and a local contractor, Jackson Constructors, was the low bidder.
Wonderful.
He feels very prepared and very comfortable with his bid and would like to move forward.
Great, it's always nice to have a local company be considered or to win the bid through all the process that the city has to go through. Questions, council members? Any comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
You go.
All right, I move to approve the bid to replace the beacon and windsock to, I don't know how I started out, anyway, I want to, to Jackson Kinsey Constructors for the amount of $19,602.53, and the replacement of the, am I doing this really wrong? I apologize.
That's a long one.
Yeah, I'm going to start over.
Okay.
And just read what.
Yes, that would be good.
Thank you, thanks. I move to approve.
The unique glasses are good.
No, I just, I need less words.
Validate the most of the road.
Right, yes. Okay, so I want to move to approve the bid from Jackson Kinsey Constructors in the amount of $19,602.53 for removal and replacement of the rotating beacon and windsock, and accept their trade-in amount, that's where I got confused, on the old beacon in the amount of $5,200 for a net cost of $14,402.53. And you can check my math.
Okay, council member Ilinski made the motion, Vice Mayor Pfeiffer seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next item is award and bid and approval of a contract with Offsite Sweeping LLC for city street sweeping services. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may remember last year during budget time, the city was considering purchasing a new sweeper. Our sweeper's definitely aging. We put a considerable amount of money into maintaining it and keeping it running every year. So last year, we were considering, do we purchase a new sweeper? Do we go out to bid? A new sweeper would have been over $130,000, and so we chose, let's go out to bid on this, let's get somebody in who can hopefully do this, save some city staff time, they'll do this more efficiently. So the city staff drafted a contract and went out to bid. Offsite sweeping out of Phoenix came in at very reasonably priced. We did check their references. They have references with the state of Arizona, city of Chandler, city of Peoria, all the references have been very happy. We would like to recommend that we move forward with Offsite Sweeping LLC and see if they can do this job for us.
So I looked at the map, and I just, and there were these questions and answers which really were very helpful, but I just want to be sure that the streets that we have, are we covering most of the bike lanes in the city?
We are covering the majority of the bike lanes in the city. We're covering all collector and arterial streets. We're responsible for sweeping state highways, so we'll sweep 260 and 89A within city limits, then all of our collector streets. And then a lot of people ask, why are we not sweeping residential streets on this contract? We are, we will maintain, or will keep our sweeper for residential streets when it's needed. We don't routinely sweep residential streets, it's much more of an as-needed basis, and it's not very common. So we'll still have our sweeper should something come up and we need to go take care of those residential streets, or if another issue comes up. We also, this is a per-lane mile contract, so if in the future we come up with a new street that, hey, we missed, or we'd like to see that swept, that's something we can consider adding.
That's great. I mean, if I get any comments from the public or bicycle riders, it's like, could you sweep these bike lanes a little more often? So hopefully, this will be very nice for people who walk and who ride bikes and those sorts of things, so.
There are, the streets will be swept once a month. There is an option that we can go down to a minimum of 10 times per year again if there's no need, if city staff feels there's no need to sweep a certain month, you know, we can save costs a little bit in that direction.
Right.
You may also have noticed in the packet, we have both an emergency call-out rate and a, what's called a heavy sweep rate. Basically, if the contractor shows up and there's more debris in the road than he feels is normal, he can ask for a heavy sweep rate. That might be due to a storm and mud runoff, it might be due to perhaps a construction, debris on the road, something like that.
This kind of sounds like an adjustable contract, and you've written it that way, which sounds like it was smart to do.
And that was at the, due to a pre-offerance that the sweeping contractors recommended.
Mm-hmm. Questions, council members? Comments from the public? Mr. Pratt?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
See if I can do better than Tim.
Yeah.
Sorry, Tim. I move to approve the contract with Offsite Sweeping LLC in the amount of $14,486.40 for annual street sweeping services, and $160 per hour for emergency and/or heavy debris street sweeping services. It's almost a tongue twister.
A second. Mr. Pratt made the motion, council member Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, number eight, rejection of all bids received in response to the city's requests for weed eradication services and directing staff to re-advertise for bid requests. And hang on till I get right over there, and we have Mr. Scott again.
Thank you again. Thank you for the compliment on the last contract, however, this contract we're not quite so proud of. We chose to go out for contract to take care of all weed eradication this year, and we did a citywide contract, including water facilities, wastewater facilities, city parks, joint contract with the Parks and Recreation Departments, city roads, and we wanted to get as much done as possible at one time. Went out to contract. Unfortunately, the low bidder did not bid the contract correctly. However, the low bidder, we'd like what they suggested. What we'd like to recommend to council is, we reject all bids at this time, and we rewrite the contract to something that we think can save the city some more funds. Basically, what we'd like to do is reduce the number of sprays per year and have the contractor warranty the sprays. Basically, he'll come back and do it again for free if any weeds come up in areas that he sprayed. And again, after reviewing it with contractors since the bid opening, that appears to be a much better solution to our weed problem.
Great, sounds good, so it just makes sense. Any comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to reject all bids received for weed eradication and direct staff to re-advertise the request for bids.
Second. Council member Norman made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Item number nine, resolution number 2677, proposing a permanent adjustment to the state-imposed 1970-80 base expenditure limitation of the city of Cottonwood. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor and council, this, every four years we get together and we take home rule to our voters, and this has been going on since 1981, and every year, every four years, we overwhelmingly get it voted, get it passed. This last year, last time we did this was back in May 19th, 2009, and it was passed overwhelmingly with a 62% of the vote. One of the reasons we're doing this is because since 1979, obviously, we've grown quite a bit. We're one of the few municipalities in the Verde Valley or in the area that are actually full-service communities. We have a fire department, a police department, but some of our communities do not have. We own a water facility and we open. We own a water facility and we own sewer facility, but some of our surrounding areas do not. So things have changed a lot. We also have a beautiful rec center that we built a few years ago that that was not available back in 1979. And what we're basically doing, what this basically does is increases the beginning, the starting point of our calculations for home, for our own home rule. Currently, our 1979 and 80 fiscal year estimate was about $1 million. We're asking to increase that to $8 million. And what that does is increase our expenditure limitation to where the city can actually function. If by any chance the city were to fail a home rule election, we would have to have to cut services drastically because obviously, as I mentioned, back in 79, we did not have fire, we did not have water, we did not have sewer, we did not have orexin. So all we're asking at this point is for the council to prove that this go on the ballot on May 21st, I believe it is, of 2013, at the general election. And with that approval, then we can go ahead and go ahead and start getting fact sheets out to the public and informing them of what this permanent base adjustment actually will mean to them. Does it mean any increases in taxes or anything? All it says to us is what revenues we do receive, we can go ahead and spend. Doesn't make any changes to property, sales tax, any type of fees of any sort. Just allows us to govern ourselves.
So the way I understand it, it doesn't change any fees, as you said, or any taxes, but it allows you to use your money to provide the services. Otherwise, it would just sit in the bank and you couldn't provide the services.
Right, and failure of a home rule, basically, it doesn't change any fees, as you said. The money still has to come in, it just doesn't authorize the city to spend it, which means that we would, you still have all those fees coming in that would sit in the bank, but we wouldn't have the service, we wouldn't be able to provide the services.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, and I think the other important point is here, all we're doing if we approve this is putting it to the voters. We're letting the voters make a choice. So if we didn't approve it, we'd say to the voters, no, you don't have the responsibility to make a choice, and that would be a wrong thing to do.
Absolutely.
So this one seems like a classic.
No brainer. Okay, we have to at least have one of those every night.
We hope so.
We've got it. This, the end of the, at the end of the evening, the last item, next to the last item. Okay, any comments from the public on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Vice Mayor, you ready?
I move to approve resolution number 2677, proposing a permanent adjustment to the city's 1979/80 base expenditure limitation and to place this proposition on the May 21st, 2013, general election ballot.
Okay.
Second.
The vice mayor made the motion, council member Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk, please read resolution number 2677 by title only.
Resolution number 2677, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, proposing a permanent adjustment to the 1979/80 base expenditure limitation of the city of Cottonwood. Madam Mayor.
Okay, and last, thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez.
Before we get to the claims and adjustments, I want to step back.
Okay.
Before I step back.
All right, for the record, council member Dowling is declaring a conflict on the claims and adjustments. Are there any questions or comments about the claims, council? Are there any comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'm, I'm going to pay the claims and adjustments.
Okay, would you like to second that? Mr. Pratt made the motion, council member Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And also, I guess, going, just going back to resolution number 2677, that is, requires a, does this require a majority, a supermajority?
It's a two-thirds.
A two-thirds, okay. So we were able to pass that with the number of people we had and the vote we got. Okay, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was, how do I pick?
It was over there.
Okay, the mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.